And to call this meeting to order for Lake Mills City Council Special Meeting. It's to discuss the executive search interviews for the city manager. February 24th, 2022. Misty, can we have roll call?
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If everyone could please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
For the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, Steve. So we're going to have a discussion on executive search interviews for city managers. That's starting to hit home a little bit. I know the first step was when you submitted your letter of intent to retire. But this is probably a little bit more closer to home here.
Yeah, 195 days now.
Is that coming?
Okay.
Yeah, so it's getting real instead of just timing, so.
And you look nice in your suit today.
Well, thanks. I dug it out again.
So today, we're gonna do three interviews of different search firms then?
Yes, there are three firms that we put forward. That's GovHR, McMahon and Associates, and Public Administration Associates. All three of them have a lot of background in Wisconsin. I've worked with all of them before.
Okay.
Most of them are ex-city managers. So I've worked with them in that form and fashion in the past, so I have a lot of experience with all of them. I will not be in the meeting. I'm going to sit out there and capture them as they come in.
Okay.
Hold them in a conference room until their turn is up. But I did want to go over that I provided you with a scoring sheet. Go ahead and score them however you feel based on their presentation and the information that they provided. And then we'll collect those and use those as a basis for the decision. I'm assuming that tonight you can have a discussion at the end in the executive session. And as Misty explained, that once the decision tonight is made on which one, she'll finalize that motion and get it on the agenda tomorrow. And then that'll be on the agenda for March 1st.
So we officially need to have the vote actually in session, correct?
Yes, you can't do it in the executive session.
Correct. So we can only form a consensus in a closed session, basically? All right.
Are there any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. In terms of interviewing each of the candidates, is it important that we try to ask them the same questions to all three, you know, just in terms of fairness or something that's tied to their specific submittal? I just want to, I don't know what sort of the ground rules are for asking them questions.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. They've all provided proposals. I think asking questions based on those proposals, and specifically with regard to the scope of services that they plan, because there are differences, I think that's where I'm personally focused. Because we have this presentation going, each one's kind of a unique animal, but we should have some form of objective criteria to score them out on. So that's the intent of that scoring sheet. And then it would be definitely good to stay kind of within the same parameters on each one. I don't know that you have to have a specific list. These are the questions that we want to ask each one, because I feel like there's different information provided in each application.
Okay, thanks.
I agree. I think that as long as you feel that it's applicable to the categories that you're scoring, and that each one will be different, I mean, they all have different types of organizations, and they all have different methods for providing the service. So you need to be able to explore those independently.
Any other questions? All right. So the first one's not scheduled till 6:00, is that?
No, 6 o'clock. So we've got a little bit of time if you want to.
We could certainly discuss, you know, a practice and procedure to apply to each perspective or applicant here. We can discuss questions right now. If there is nothing to discuss, we can certainly enter recess until the first applicant is ready and available. This is on you.
Are these the only three that applied with the RFP?
No.
We received, oh, go ahead.
We received five.
Okay.
And we, I reviewed them, and then Dan and Misty reviewed them. I made the suggestion on the three. They agreed.
Okay.
And so we move forward with these three, which is what we brought to you when we had the motion at the one council meeting. And so these were the ones that had the most experience in Wisconsin, most experience with executive searches, and most background in being able to work with city managers.
Any other questions? Seeing that we have so much time on the clock here, I'm suggesting that maybe we entertain a recess, if everyone's okay with that. Maybe a motion to go that direction?
I'll make a motion that we recess until 6 o'clock and return for the first interview.
A second.
Who is the second? All right. So recess.
Pull this out of here.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidno. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, 5:00. We will recess until 6 o'clock. Thank you. Yeah, we can reconvene. It's almost 6 o'clock. So we'll reconvene the meeting. We're going to start off with GovHRUSA. And it looks like we must have Maureen up on the screen right now.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. I don't know if we should go around the room and introduce ourselves quickly, or what's the best way to move forward here, but can you see all of us on the screen?
I can.
All right. I'm City Council President Greg Waters. And to my right here is Mr. Fields. You want to? Sorry.
Go ahead. Steve Fields, I'm the Vice President Counsel.
All right, hello.
Hi, I'm Lisa Curler. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, council member.
On the left?
Hi, I'm Michelle Quidno.
Hello.
Hi, and I'm Catherine Bishop.
Okay. Hi, nice to meet all of you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, and I'm over here. I'm Dan Drescher. I'm the attorney for the city.
And I'm way over here.
And I'm way over here. I'm Steve Wilkie, city manager.
Short.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
We keep them off the video screen, because there's reasons for that.
Really ugly.
All right, all right, thank you.
We'll go ahead and open the floor for you, and you can take it from here.
Okay. Do you all have a copy of my PowerPoint in front of you there? Do you want me to share the screen, or just go off the paper?
We do have your PowerPoint, so however you're comfortable proceeding, we can go through it as you go, or if you want to display, that's fine.
Let me see if I can do this here. Let's try this.
No, we don't have our PowerPoint. We have our document.
Dave does have her PowerPoint.
Oh, okay.
He could do this if she wasn't going to.
Okeydoke.
Okay. Oh, whoa, okay, hold on. We're back to the beginning here. Hold on one second. Let me. Sorry about that. Hold on. Oh, boy, this is getting confusing now.
So while you're working on that, Maureen, where are you from? Where are you tonight?
Yes, yes, Evanston, Illinois.
Okay. So you've been getting all that snow that's missing us.
That's right, that's right. Hold on one second here. I think I've got it now. Okay, and there we go.
Yep, we got it. Thanks.
Okay, all right, that might be helpful. And I don't know if anybody, is this televised, or is there anybody watching from home?
Yeah, there'll be, it is being televised, so people will be watching from home.
Then that'll help, help the folks following at home. Okay. Well, thank you again for inviting us to be here tonight. I'm here representing GovHRUSA, and I will be the primary consultant on the project if we are awarded the recruitment service. So my partner, Lee Simborsky, is, I don't know, maybe some of you know him. Lee's well-known in Wisconsin management circles. And he's not able to be here with me tonight, but certainly sends his regards. So the approach that we kind of like to take, it's always tailored to the municipality that we're working with, or the local government, but we kind of always have some things in common when we approach a new recruitment. So we partner with you throughout the process. I'll tell you a little bit more about what we do on the front end to kind of determine, you know, to learn about the city and what's important to you, and what are the things that you're looking for in candidates for the position. We always keep integrity at the forefront in terms of our delivery of the services. And I think our clients will tell you that that's the case. We will definitely provide an honest assessment of candidates. I'll talk a little bit more about that, and some of the ways we have to try to give you some insights into people we're bringing to you. And we are well-regarded, both locally and nationally. We certainly do a lot of work in Wisconsin, so hopefully there's lots of other cities that have worked with us that would tell you the same. We have consultants located in Arizona, and by the way, I am, I'm going to go through this, you know, pretty briefly, since you have it in front of you, and leave you a lot of time to ask questions at the end, but if you would like to stop me at any point, I can't see you right now, but please just speak up, okay?
Sure.
All right. So we have consultants right now in multiple states. There may even be a few that are not on this list. We seem to be adding people pretty quickly these days. Arizona, Florida, Georgia, Illinois, Indiana, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota, Mississippi, North Carolina, Ohio, Tennessee, and certainly Wisconsin. The reason, one of the reasons this is important, and we kind of lay this out for you, you're all aware that, you know, in the days of the Great Resignation, there's lots of jobs changes right now for people, and certainly the city management field is not immune to that. Lots of people kind of sat tight through COVID-19. There wasn't a lot of job changing going on, and now we're seeing a lot of kind of pent-up demand, turnover in positions. And I think that just adds to some of the challenges that have already existed for some time in terms of recruiting for local government management positions. So having this wide network throughout the country, I think, is going to be helpful to you and to our other clients in that we can tap people in other states. You might have a preference for a local or Wisconsin candidate, and we'll certainly, you know, give it our all within the state, but it certainly helps to be able to tap on candidates that are not in the state as well. And as we're seeing, you know, sometimes fewer candidates for some of these jobs than we'd like to have, it certainly helps us to be able to tap into candidates we know of in recruitments from other states who might be looking for something in particular that's unique to your city, or similar kind of quality to some other kind of position that they had been seeking, so we can kind of share our resources that way. We've done about 950 recruitments since we opened as GovHR in 2009. Heidi Voorhees is one of the co-founders of the company. She had been in municipal consulting and recruiting for a while before that, working for the PAR group, PAR, Paul Ray Omen Associates, and then under Voorhees and Associates, and then joined with Joellen Katamatory to become GovHRUSA in 2009. So we've been doing this for a while now. Lots of experience under our belts. Recently, this is not an exhaustive list, but just a few kind of select positions. Waukesha, several recruitments there. Monroe, Wisconsin, and City Administrator. Oak Creek, Wisconsin, we've done multiple recruitments since 2016. These are multiple positions, not the city manager many times since 2016, just to be clear. Cottage Grove, Wisconsin, multiple recruitments. And then the next three are ones that I've worked on myself. I have experience as a municipal advisor, and so I have been working on some, a lot of finance director recruitments lately. So I worked with Calliope County, Jamesville, and La Crosse, you know, four finance positions there. And then we've also done multiple recruitments in Dunn County. So we're very familiar with Wisconsin, do a lot of work here. Again, I know Lee would have more to say about that if he was here. Just a quick overview, my experience. I worked directly for three cities prior to becoming consultant. I worked in Illinois for the Village of Willmet in the city of Evanston. I worked for a city in Arizona, and I did some work in Ohio before I went into the municipal advisor field for about 13 years. I worked with a company called Ellers and Associates, many of you may be familiar with. They do a lot of work in Wisconsin. And then I've been with GovHR since 2020. So working, starting out with a lot of Illinois clients, but now more nationally based as well. Lee Simborsky might, will be assisting me with the recruitment, and I certainly will be tapping his experience and contacts in Wisconsin in this project if we were awarded it. He knows lots of folks here, and I'm sure his experience will be invaluable. So he's done 130 successful searches since he started in 2014. He has over 33 years of local government experience working directly for cities in Wisconsin prior to that, and is obviously involved in a number of the associations, as am I. I'm a member of the Wisconsin Government Finance Officers Association myself as well. We have 28% of our clients are repeat customers. 46% have conducted more than two recruitment processes with us. We think that's significant statistics, since we've only been a company since 2009 now. So we generally like to think we do a good job. Our ratings show that, and we many times get rehired for other recruitments after we've worked with a city. We have 34 consultants right now. A number, we have, I'd say about, I don't know what the number is actually right now, eight or nine that are full-time. The rest are kind of contract workers, working on any given assignment, depending on the type of work that it is, the type of, whether it's a city manager or something more specialized area. Okay. We have, as I mentioned before, we take kind of a unique approach, depending on who we're working with and what the needs of the organization we're working with, but we start with the same kind of basis at the beginning every time, which is with a dialogue with you. We'll have a meeting, we call it kind of a kickoff meeting, with maybe the city manager, one or two other representatives of the city to kind of just, kind of have an initial discussion about the process, and what your expectations are, what kind of components of it you'd like to include, and who we should talk to. We learn more about the organization. We learn, you know, what you have in mind in terms of the process, you know, what's important to the organization, what's important to the community. We'll identify some other people that we, you think we should talk to. So each contract does allow for a number of stakeholder interviews with, you know, members of the council, members of the community, you know, however, whoever you think it's really important that we speak to, to get some input on the front end in terms of the kinds of qualities that you're looking for in candidates, what kind of projects or priorities are important to the community at the time. So that helps us as we're making contacts with potential candidates, and reviewing applications to see, you know, who we think would be the best fit for this position based on the input you give us at the front. So we do spend a lot of time on that, so that we make sure, at the end of the process, you end up with the kind of candidate that you're looking for. Focus groups, surveys, town halls, those are kind of optional things that can be included in the process, too, if you would like to include those kind of things. It depends, again, on how long of a time you'd like to spend on the process, how much input you like the community to have. We develop a position announcement, which is a short ad, and then we also do a more extensive recruitment brochure. The short ad, the position announcement, will be posted on social media sites. It will be posted on, we call it an ad source list, so it'll be maybe 15 to 25 different professional organizations and places where these types of positions are typically posted. So that includes things like ICMA, which is the International City-City Management Association, the Wisconsin ICMA, those kinds of groups where, you know, city managers tend to look for these kinds of opportunities. So we start by going where they're expecting to see job ads, but we go beyond that in terms of lots of ads on social media and other kinds of organizations. So we do make pretty extensive use of social media. We also go, you know, more proactively, rather than just posting ads and waiting for people to see them. Again, this is where I mentioned, we use our network to do a lot of outreach. We make calls, we make contacts, and a lot of those are, you know, starting with people who have already applied for positions, and so we know they're actively searching for a new position right now. So those are kind of the people we start out with. But we'll also call people in Wisconsin in particular, who we think might be well-suited for the position that we've come across, either through, you know, our own professional networks, or just, you know, meeting them through opportunities at conferences, those kind of things. You know, again, this is where having that larger number of consultants really helps us by broadening the base of outreach we have in the management community. So we have a 500-plus email database, and we also use LinkedIn very extensively. LinkedIn is becoming more and more of a powerful tool in terms of us getting the word out there to places. We've also invested in subscription services that give us access to the contact information of professionals in similar positions, both locally and throughout the country. These subscription services can be expensive, and so they're not, you know, maybe not, some of our competitors that are, you know, don't have quite the broad base that GovHR does, may not use these as well. So we like to make sure you're aware that we have an extra tool at our disposal here. We do complete the process. We manage the process from kind of start to finish. Once we put those ads out there, we will start to receive applications. We acknowledge receipt of an application right away, so that a candidate knows it's been received, you're in the process now. There's no wondering about whether my application was received, and, you know, what the next steps are. We tell them right away. As soon as the due date for the position is closed, you know, someone will be in touch with them if they're going to be selected for an interview. So we do a good job with communicating with applicants. That's really important to the people that work at GovHR. We do screening and reviewing of all the applicants. We look for those that basically meet the qualifications that you've established upfront, that you're looking for. And then we start by doing our, kind of narrowing the group down to those that meet the requirements that you've specified. We'll do a screen, we call them screening interviews, which are live video interviews with that group of prospective candidates. Depending on how many people are in, have applied for the position, you know, we'd like to try to get a group of, I'd say, like 12 to 15 people for that group. It may be less if we get fewer qualified applicants. We will conduct background searches on those and call their references. We also do what we call Google searches. We'll do, look at the internet and social media sites. We look for Twitter posts, Facebook posts, things out there, out there about the candidates that you would find if you Googled those people, those candidates, and certainly people in the community would see as well. We want you to be aware of what's out there, so that, you know, you're not surprised by anything as the candidate proceeds further down the process. Another option is a one-way recorded video that you can take a look at later. If we have a number of candidates, and you say, I don't want to interview 10 people, but we need to narrow the pool down a little bit, that's one way to do it. We also will then prepare a list of semifinalists. We will tell you a little bit about each of those candidates, what we've learned about them, the results of our interviews with them, to help you make a decision about the group that you would like to narrow it down to. Am I doing it on time here? It's 18:00. Okay. We have, then we, you know, again, we have this meeting with you. We call it the candidate presentation. You decide who you would like, you know, to kind of approve that list. We will then arrange, we will also, when we get to a smaller group of finalist candidates, we can do additional background inquiries that include a search of their criminal records, credit checks, motor vehicle and education, to make sure that what they're presenting on their resumes is accurate and truthful. So again, we don't want to get down the road with the candidate and then find out that there's something, you know, that would make you not want to hire them at the end. We prepare the interview questions. We'll work with you on what kind of process you'd like to use for the interviews, how that's all going to work. We'll facilitate the final interviews. We can do those by Zoom, or we can do those in person. You know, we can do one interview, and then get to a finalist group, is what will typically happen with the city manager type of search. At the end, we can help you with negotiating a contract, if that's something you would like assistance with. We have a real commitment to diversity. We are a woman-owned company. Again, I mentioned Heidi Voorhees and Joellen Katamatory are the co-owners of the company. We have a long-held partnership with the Institute for Excellence in Public Service. We have recently formed a formal partnership, although we've been informally working with them for a long time now, with the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. We are affiliated with the Local Government Hispanic Network, and with several women's groups. Some of them are kind of statewide organizations, but the League of Women in Government is certainly one of those. And other emerging local government leaders, which is younger people in the profession and so forth. We do a lot of presentations at manager conferences and so forth. I think our firm is definitely well-known in Wisconsin and the Midwest, and we are becoming more and more of a nationwide firm. So, you know, again, this is, these are things that kind of set GovHR apart, I think, hopefully from some of our competitors. We like to really focus on the partnership. This is your process. At the end of the day, we want the focus to be on what you're looking for in candidates, and the process to be conducted in the way that you'd like to do it. We certainly will provide the benefit of our experience and give you advice when you'd like it, but it's your call at the end of the day about how, you know, these things work. We do have a proven process, a proven approach. We have an extensive network, and we do have a guarantee. We have an extensive network and we do have a guarantee for our search, which is explained in the contract. Typically, if you're not satisfied with the results of of the the research within one year, you know, we will do the search again. We do have some caveats to that, which is that, you know, the the salary, the compensation that's offered is is reasonable to begin with. You know, we're finding that to be an issue as as compensation has risen a little bit for city managers, but for the most part, we guarantee our work for within a year. Again, we're known for that commitment diversity to diversity. Communication, I mentioned, is a is a real priority for us. And as I mentioned also, we do a lot of of work with local government organizations. Every one of our consultants and many of our people in the background have worked formerly for local government. We're committed to the profession and to finding communities, the people who we think will really help them achieve the goals that they're looking for. So I think from here, there's a little bit of repetition in terms of some of the things we've already said. We do, you know, we do, again, really communicate very thoroughly with applicants throughout the process, but we also communicate with the clients throughout the process. We provide regular updates once we get started, and we're always available if you have questions about things in between. Again, we're committed to the profession. I think I've mentioned most of these things already. So we have a guarantee. Again, I mentioned that already. We'll stay with you until you've selected the ideal candidate. Sometimes searches don't work well in the first run, and we need to go back out and advertise again. Again, we'll do that. We only pass on the cost of having to advertise additionally if if we choose to go that route, meaning you choose to go that route. We wouldn't charge you for our services to do that search over again, and I mentioned the one-year guarantee also. So COVID nineteen has been a bit of a challenge, but we do have done a lot of work anyway, virtually. We have conducted entire processes virtually. It looks like hopefully we're getting to the point where the Omicron variant is is starting to wane, so hopefully we'll be able to get back to doing more in-person meetings, and you're certainly close enough that, you know, I'd be available to come up and and meet with you and and be available for interviews and those kinds of things. So, you know, either one of those things are options. We can do video conferences as well, you know, on a shorter shorter notice if that that's what's required. So just kind of in summary, why you should consider GovHR. Again, that depth of experience in recruitment, our extensive outreach. We have over six thousand visits to our career center each month, and we also have a weekly new jobs email that goes to about twelve thousand email addresses every week. We have a knowledge of and a commitment to diversity, communication and professional local government manage. We have an excellent reputation, which hopefully anyone you talk to will affirm for us. We've done client surveys after our projects, and ninety-four percent have rated the firm as outstanding and said they would plan to use us again. So I think that covers everything I wanted to say, and I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you have now.
Fantastic. Thank you, Maureen.
All right.
In your back, we can see your face again.
Okay. Saved saved you from a little the little displeasure they're going through.
So we'll go ahead and open it up to questions. Anyone got a question offhand? Yes, Ms. Quinell.
Hi, Maureen, I'm Michelle. I'm just wondering, in looking at your information, one of the things that is a concern for a small town like ours is making sure that our our selected person stays for a long period of time. What, do you have any information about the longevity of your of your placements? And if there is anything, I mean, obviously, personalities are going to vary, but I'm just wondering if there is any information you can provide with regard to how successful the placements have been?
Right, right. You know, we try to, we try to do some research on that every now and again, and I think, you know, the last piece of data that we had showed about at least a four-year, you know, kind of a four-year median length of stay for managers. You know, and again, I just think that that's really why that work on the front end is really important. We try to to do a a real thorough job of getting to know your community so that we know, you know, what's going to work with you, what's going to, you know, what's the type of of candidate that will do well there? And how do we make this a good match so that this person wants to stay with you for for as as long as you'd like them to? So, you know, that's that's why we spend that time on the front end.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Curler.
Hi, Maureen, this is Lisa Curler. Thanks for your presentation. I have a question. I was intrigued by your remarks about salary, which I think we're all generally aware that we're going to need to to be thinking about, you know, what is a competitive salary for this recruitment? Is there anything that you will be doing on the front end of the position assessment and working with us to help advise us on what would be an appropriate salary range to offer?
Sure, sure. We do have, you know, one another kind of side service we do is not side, but it's just another type of service, is salary studies, which are more comprehensive than I think you'd be looking for at this point. But that gives us information about types of positions in in specific areas. And so we can use knowledge we've gained from doing those types of studies, you know, in your area, in Wisconsin at least, to, you know, help us to determine what what are what are the standard ranges right now being used, and not just in Wisconsin, but but nationwide to say, you know, what's what's a what what is the minimum kind of salary and what's an appropriate range for this position right now? And then we'll give you feedback about, you know, whether what you'd like to to use is going to be, you know, adequate or whether we think you need to to maybe consider increasing that a little bit in order to attract the the type of candidates that you're looking for. And, you know, again, it it depends on what you're what you're requiring. If you're, you know, interested in in paying a little less and getting a candidate with less experience, you know, that that may work well for you. But if you're interested in having somebody that has at least, you know, seven to ten years of experience as a as a manager or an assistant manager, then you may have to pay a little bit more than what you had, you know, previously considered in order to get someone with that kind of experience. So we'll we'll help you determine on the front end what's an appropriate salary, what's within your budget, what works for you before we post the ads. We want that to, that's, you know, a primary consideration, and we do suggest that every every ad we post at this point needs to include a salary range. And if it's not something that we think is going to be competitive to start with, you know, then really, you're not going to get the kind of results you're looking for.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
May I?
Sure.
Hi, Maureen, this is Dan Drescher. I'm the attorney for the city. I'm just wondering, and this is kind of general, and I don't really expect much with regard to the first part of the question, but the second part, I think, has some meat. What do you know about the city of Lake Mills and what should we be looking for in in our next city manager? What what are kind of your key criteria that you see as success in placements at this point?
Well, I I did a little review of of your budget and of your website. I know that you're a city of about close to six thousand people, east of Madison, Wisconsin, so that's a generally, I won't say, I don't want to say affluent, but definitely higher home values, higher household income than than I would say in the rest of Wisconsin, at least by a little bit. Looks like a high quality of life type of community, you know, with a reasonable budget for the size of community. So, you know, I I think, you know, what we would expect to see here is is, you know, I and I don't know, I haven't had a chance to talk to your manager yet, so I'm not sure what, you know, the, I think this is a retirement. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and a long-term manager, about twenty, twenty-plus years.
Right, right. So, you know, I think it's 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 probably premature for me to say too much more without talking, having more of an in-depth discussion about that. You know, I I think for these types of positions, smaller communities, it's not uncommon to have first-time managers in these types of roles. If that's not something, you know, you're you're going to find acceptable, we can help you find somebody that has some assistant city manager experience or, you know, has worked in a in a smaller community before even. You know, that's that's, I think, typically what we would expect to see here, and we would want to have the compensation kind of be reflective of of that particular range of expertise. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay.
Maureen, this is Greg Waters. When we go through our search, we we hope we find that right candidate the first time, but if we have to rely on that one-year guarantee, can you give us a a success story, maybe without naming what city it was, but where maybe it didn't work out in that first year and you had to come in and and implement that one-year guarantee? And how did that process go and how did that work?
You know, I guess I can't really speak to that from my my own experience. I I've been with the company since 2020, and I guess I'm I'm haven't been to the point yet where I've I've reached that point in any of the recruitments I've worked on directly. I know, I don't think we have to do it very often, but I know that occasionally it comes into play. And, you know, obviously, we we put that out there in our agreement. It's something we take seriously, so, you know, we we don't drag our feet on it and we undertake it, I think, you know, the second, the second time around with the same, the same enthusiasm, with the same, you know, full process that we would the first time. You know, at the end of the day, we we want, we want the outcome of this recruitment to be successful. We want you to end up with the, you know, the right candidate for the position, and so we're willing to do what what it takes to help you get to that point.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know, that might not have been as specific as you would have liked. I'm sure some of my colleagues that have
I was hoping for a success story, but I guess in a way you had a success story that you never had to do it, but
Let me, let me say, like I said, it doesn't happen very often, but I have not heard of a case where we've had to do a third time. So so we'll say that it's it's successful from that perspective.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, I have one more.
Yes.
Hi, it's Michelle again. Hi, just wondering, I was thinking about what you said when you said that there would, because of our small community, it would probably be more attractive to some new city managers, or I should say newer city managers. What advantage is there to having someone who's a little bit green versus someone who's a little bit more experienced?
You know, and another thing that might happen is maybe you have somebody who's been in local government actually for a longer period of time but hasn't been a manager yet. This would be a first-time manager position for them. You know, just advantages would be, you know, somebody coming in with a lot of enthusiasm, somebody who's, you know, willing to take, you know, the experience that they have and really kind of develop the finer points of their their management experience, you know, bring to you, you know, if they've worked in other local governments before, bring to you some of the things that they've learned in those places. And but yet they're they're not, you know, kind of set in in any particular mold yet and definitely willing to to look at things with fresh perspective with you. So there's, there's lots of advantages to that. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of great young folks in the, you know, coming into city management. We see it all the time, you know, people who are management analysts now, you know, assistant managers in in communities and, you know, excited about, you know, taking that next step in their careers and bringing bringing to places the things that they've learned. I mean, you know, maybe they work in a larger community and and see, you know, oftentimes you have to, you know, I remember this, I was an assistant village manager in Rome Met. You know, you have to, you have to gain that experience before you can kind of move up to that that next next step. So maybe if you're working for a larger city, you need to go be a manager in a smaller community before you'll be able to move to, you know, be a city manager in a larger community. So and maybe that's not what you want to do. Maybe your aspiration is to work with smaller communities, and that's where you're happy and that's where you'll stay for a long time. You never know. But, you know, I I'm continually impressed by the type of individuals that go into this profession. There's, there's a lot of good that they have to offer to communities. So, you know, I think, you know, I I like doing the interviews. I like meeting people and seeing, you know, what their interests are and and learning about their careers. And, you know, every group we have, there's, there's people in there that I think are really impressive, and I'm I'm happy to present to communities and, you know, encourage them to take, take a look at them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Bishop.
Hi, Maureen, this is Catherine Bishop. I'm looking at your information gathering portion of your proposal, and I see that stakeholder interviews are included in the proposal fee and as well as an email address for feedback from the community. So my question is, how will your firm advertise to the community that this exists to give feedback? And then how do you incorporate that feedback into your search?
Yeah, I think that's something that has to be determined at the front end when we have that kind of kickoff meeting with, you know, the the people that you designate to be, the people that will be involved in that at the front end, when we really kind of talk about the process and what you're looking for. You know, that'll, that'll all be in there. You know, typically, it's something that's posted on the community's website, like you would post other kinds of of issues of interest to the community. You would maybe talk about it in a council meeting, you know, whatever, whatever way you would normally use to to get information out into the community that you wanted them to have is is what we would typically. I, you know, I think you want to allow enough time for people to get it on their calendar and kind of plan for it, you know, just just like anything else. If we, if we want people to show up, we do the things that we need to do to to make it convenient and accessible for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Hi, Maureen, this is Steve Horry.
Hello, good.
On your proposal, you have some different options. Can you kind of just give us an idea how often maybe other communities have taken advantage of these options and kind of in order of magnitude, what we could possibly see for costs if we did take some of the options?
You know, I'm not the best person to speak about costs of some of the options. I don't actually put the proposals together. You know, I think it's fairly common to have, you know, some of these items we talked about at the town hall. You know, again, it's a smaller community, but, you know, it depends on how active people in the community are, how typically, you know, how well you feel like you've got a good sense of of what they're looking for. Do you, do you feel like, you know, they're going to be satisfied with taking, you know, letting you be the leads in that and determine, you know, what those things are? Or do you feel like they're really going to want to have some say into that? And that will determine how extensive we think that outreach process, you know, needs to be, whether it's something as as simple as, you know, send us your comments, where, you know, something like that could be very inexpensive versus something where we, you know, we do multiple kind of town hall meetings, or maybe we would just do one. I think it's common to do one, you know, that kind of thing. But for a community your size, I would say to have to do a lot more than that would would be, you know, a little rarer.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, I'm sure Lori Peterson is our, our person in our firm who handles pricing, and I am sorry, I don't have that information. And I am sorry, I don't have that information for you, but I'm certain if you contacted her tomorrow, or I can let her know you're interested in the cost of some of those options, you know, we'd be glad to get you some additional information on that.
All right. I think that's a wrap. Thank you, Maureen, for spending your Thursday night with us. We really appreciate it. We expect to make a decision on this next Tuesday during our city council meeting. So you'll probably hear back, I would imagine, Wednesday on what our decision is. So, thanks again. And I think I'm going to go ahead and motion to take a 10-minute recess so that we can fill out our evaluation form and, and do a bathroom. So if I can get a second and a quick vote?
A second.
All right. All in favor? All right, that was 5-0. We'll take a 10-minute recess. It's currently 7:45-ish, so we'll come back at-
At 6:40.
At 6:45-ish. We'll come back at 6:55. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen.
All right, we'll call this meeting back to order. It's, what is it, about 6:56, 6:57 time period? And it looks like we have McMahon Engineers/Architects up. Is that correct? Are we on the same page?
That's correct.
All right, fantastic. So welcome to Lake Mills. Nice to have you here.
Thank you.
We can, you can see our, our names. We got Lisa over there, Steve, Greg, Michelle, and Catherine. And Dan is our city attorney. So I guess we'll, we'll jump into it and let you go right into your presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'm, my name is Jeff Romer. I'm the Public Safety Manager for McMahon Associates. That Public Safety and Municipal Management Group is the group that I oversee. And we'll go to the next slide. With me today is Lori Goss, and she will be presenting part of this too. She'll also be the project manager. And I'll have her, give her background when she comes up and kind of tell you where, where she comes from. So McMahon, McMahon Associates and our Public Safety Municipal Management Group literally originated with, with me and what was called RW Management Group, was our consulting firm, my consulting firm before. You have been a client of RW Management Group. We've worked with you with the fire department several years ago. We were talking with, with Steve earlier, and we literally, I remember when City Hall wasn't here, the fire department building wasn't here, and all the old buildings were here. So been around Lake Mills for quite a while. What happened was two years ago, or two and a half years ago now, McMahon acquired my company. They, they're an architecture and engineering firm, and they had a lot of, they had over 200 municipal clients. I had had over 300 municipal clients prior to that point. And they were continually having their municipal clients ask them if they could do all these different services that they couldn't do. So they brought us on board. There was five other consultants with me at the time. We're now up to 18 consultants, and we have four different sectors. So it's worked out really well, and we've been able to provide a lot of services for municipalities. So we do basically public safety and municipal management consulting. We're headquartered in Nina. We have offices in Indiana and Illinois. We actually are, are consulting our Public Safety and Municipal Management Group, really go nationwide. We've even done some stuff internationally. We've done some work in Saudi Arabia. We've completed over 300 separate public management engagements, both multi- and single agency. And between McMahon as a whole and myself, just municipal clients, we have over 500 municipal clients that we've worked with. We go to the next slide. What's important to us is we, all of us, all of the consultants, including myself, all have a background working for government and municipalities. My background is public safety. I was police chief, fire chief, EMS director, one of those crazy guys that wore all three hats, and did all of those for way too many years. So we have a passion for municipal government. So our mission statement basically says that. What, what we look at for consulting is being able to provide professional services to you and recommendations that you're able to implement. And I think one of the, I've been doing this for over 25 years, consulting for over 25 years. And during that time, I think the, the greatest thing for me is that we continually work with clients again and again after we do studies, and we do interim management and that type of work, helping them implement the recommendations. We do a thing called Management Council, which, where we, we literally get hired, instead of doing a study, we get hired to come in, for example, not saying that you're doing this, but if your fire department takes over EMS, we actually work with departments to make that happen, and help them get through all the hoops and, and make sure everything's done the right way. Go to the next slide. So what makes us different than other consulting firms is our team experience. On our teams, even when we do public safety work, we have experience with city administrators. Lori's background is being a city administrator. We have fire chief experience, police chief, emergency management director, EMS director. We put all those together. If we're doing public works, we also have public works people that work on public works. Next slide. We have four different sectors in our Public Safety and Municipal Management Group. One is public safety and emergency management, and that's dealing with police, fire, EMS, emergency management. We have a public management sector. Lori is a sector leader over that. So she is also the project manager on this project. And in that group, we have six different administrators that are in there, past administrators that are in that group that work with her. We have, we also provide security services. We do security analysis, a lot of work with municipalities and churches and other businesses to do a security analysis and help them, even with security from, with our architects, right from the beginning of putting a building together, so that security is included right, right up front. And then we have, the other sector is building inspections. We do municipal building inspections, both commercial and uniform dwelling code. In the public management area, our biggest area is we, we do executive selection, which is a proposal you have in front of you. And we do that for all positions within the city. We do public administration services, just about every position in a city. We can help fill or do interim work, or help you in, in any of those areas, including like public works management. We have somebody from park recs and facilities management. And as I mentioned, we do a lot of management council, and that's where, instead of doing a study, we come in and just help you figure out which direction you should go, and then help you implement it. So what happens a lot of time in studies is that you get a study back, and then it's like, okay, well, we got 40 recommendations here. Who's going to do this? Who's going to make this happen? We, we do that a lot. Next slide. This talks about who we serve, that we fully understand municipal operations. I think the other, the big thing with this, in this area, is that we don't just do executive selection. We don't just do organizational studies. We do just about everything you can think of dealing with municipalities. So all of our consultants are used to working in all different areas, and are used to working with municipalities. And it's not like we're a CPA firm that now says they are consultants and, and helps you get through issues. We, we understand the issues. All of our practitioners, all of our consultants, all 18, have worked I think you will find, Steve would know, our reputation. We have a very good reputation. We're known throughout the state. And like I said, we've worked with over 300, over 500 different municipalities throughout the state. Next slide. Okay. I will let Lori give a little of her background and kind of tell you how we handle this type of proposal.
All right, thanks, Jeff. As Jeff had said, my name is Lori Goss. I was the administrator, clerk treasurer for the city of Brilliant for 21 years. Prior to that, I worked as a finance director for the village of Sherwood. So I'm over on the east side of Lake Winnabega is, is where, where I live, and that's my hometown. So I will be the project manager for you if we are selected to do this project for you. And on my team is also Henry Velikor. Henry comes with about 30 years of experience, municipal experience. He was an administrator, retired too, and still, like me, likes to help people. So that's, that's what makes my job at McMahon fun, because I get to help those that had once helped me, you know, so be part of that team to help municipalities find the needs that they, fill the needs that they, they can't fill on their own. So that's what makes the work that we do really enjoyable. And also on my team will be Ed Hensel. And Ed has, oh gosh, 30-plus, 40 years almost, 45 years. Ed's kind of like our, our go-to guy. If, if it's not known, Ed's got the answer. So he'll be serving on the team as well. So we feel with our team, we can provide you with, with the background that you're looking for in selecting your next city manager, because those are big shoes to fill. So we want to be in communication with you at all times. We'll start out with the first, right away at the beginning, to meet with you, to talk about what you see your needs are in that position, and, and select what you, who you want to serve on the search committee with our team. So we'll be working together throughout the project. And then what we'll also do is, is look at what it is you're looking for as far as what, what you want to achieve from the candidates, what you want out of the position. You have somebody that's been in the position for a long time. It's really, that's, that's tough. You know, when I left Brilliant, it was, I remember the day I told them my plans for retirement, and the look on their faces were like, you can't go, Lori. It's, you know, those, you're, you're, you're what keeps this all together. So we'll help you find that and help you with that transition period. We'll interview members of the city council, department heads, any other people that you think would be appropriate in the community, other community stakeholders, might be the Chamber of Commerce, civic groups, somebody from the school district, whoever that you think you might want to include in this interview process. Because which, this position is not just about government, it's about the whole city as a whole, your whole community. And there's interactions with all those different entities throughout the city. So we, we want to make sure that we help you find that person to fit, fit the needs throughout the community. So you want that input from outside stakeholders or potentials, or other stakeholders within this, this community. So when we, we'll send out like a questionnaire for, for those individuals to fill out, and we'll take that, and based on that information and what we've learned from you, we'll, we'll put together and work with the, the selection team, that would be our team and your team, to come up with a description for the position, and how you want to start advertising that. So how do you want that announcement to go out? So we'll work with you on that, so that we can come up with, with a good plan of action on how to advertise for the position. We'll create a recruitment brochure that we can put out there. We'll talk about different networks that we use. We, we use, you know, Wisconsin City Managers Association, Allegable Wisconsin municipalities, those are ones you're familiar with hearing. We use LinkedIn at McMahon. We use Facebook. There's another platform that we just learned about that's called Handshake. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with that. It's with UW System, and that's where students can go on there and look for a position. So we do that as well. We also communicate it out to the UW extension. There, there may be some, somebody that's looking for, you know, fresh, fresh out of college and wants to jump right in, that we'll, we'll go out and reach out to those UW systems and see what they, they can help you fill that position with. But, but all those networks we'll talk about together. So we won't just go throw it out there, and we'll, we'll talk to you about that as, as we get along in the project. And then the next stage, which is about the second month into it, that's when we'll start collecting the resumes. We'll be that contact source. So they'll come to us. We'll keep them organized, look through them, show you them at any time that the team wants to start looking through them. We'll start going through them. We'll talk about that at the beginning too. How, what do you want to put down for a date as far as applications need to be in by? Do you want to set a date? Some communities choose to leave it open until filled. It depends on what you want to see happen. So that we'll, we'll collect those, those resumes, go through them, put them all in order, make it, make it in a format that, format that you can easily read and understand. And then we'll go through the process of pre-qualifying them and working with the team. So it's, it's, again, the city and, and our team from McMahon. It's not just McMahon, because this is your selection. So we're, we're helping you find that selection, that best selection. So we'll put the resumes together, come up with what we all feel together is the best top, you know, a maximum of 10. And then from that top list, we'll start doing some telephone interviews, and bring that down to three to five candidates that we feel comfortable to do, that, that we feel that will be a, a good candidate to do the next phase, which is then the personal interviews. So we'll organize that. We'll, we'll get the interviews scheduled for, for the team. And well, there's a step that we'll do in there, and that's to talk about the questions, that interview questions together ahead of time. Make sure that everyone knows what questions will be asked. And, and I'm sure during an interview, you'll think of something that you'll, you'll want to ask a candidate. You may not want to ask the next candidate. But we want to make sure though, that you're well-versed on what questions you can and cannot ask, because there are some. You've got to be very careful with that. So we'll make sure that you're well-versed in that. And we'll, we'll schedule the interview process, and we'll facilitate that, that whole process. And then the group will come down to, okay, what does the city feel are the, the, the top candidates that you are the top finalist? If it's one, maybe it is just one. Maybe it's one, and then you've got another one that would be second on the list, should the first one, something happen. When I left Brilliant, I'll give you an example. Well, when I left Brilliant, we had a candidate, he was, we thought, all fantastic. He was ready to make the move, and, and coming, he was a young man with this brand-new wife, and lo and behold, she found out she was pregnant. And he thought that at that time wasn't a good time in his family to make that move. So he said, I'm sorry, you know, I, I really feel, feel bad. I was so looking forward to this, but in my family, this is not the right time for me. So then we had to, to go to the second choice, and he's still there today. So, you know, the second choice may be the first choice, and you just don't know it. So you want to, you want to take the time to look through that and, and prioritize those. And then we'll do the, the pre-employment checks, background checks. Make sure that we verify all their credentials that they have listed, get professional references, check those. We can also do some of the criminal, financial background checks, things like that. So we get that, that work all done for you. And we can work with the city attorney on that as well, to see if there's anything that it might be of a concern for you. And then the final part comes down to it. If, if accepted, the individual accepts the position, we'll help negotiate with you. If, if you want us to, you have a full-time attorney, maybe you don't need that, us to do that. But we'll help you to put together what would be an employment contract for you. So, and then we'll help in the transition period too, should you need that, that assistance. As Jeff said, we, we help a lot of communities do things that, you know, they, they can't, or they, they don't have the wherewithal to do on their own. So we'll help you with that final phase, and hope that you would have, out of this whole process, a city manager that will get you- process, a city manager that will get you into the next, hopefully, decade or more. Are there any questions that you would have?
Are you done with the presentation? Should we go right into questions?
Sure, I guess so, yeah.
All right, fantastic. All right, so let's open it up. Any questions? I'll start, since no one's going to ask a question. Is there a, once we find somebody and let's say they leave within six months to maybe a year, is there any type of a guarantee after we go through this long search? Wondering if you have a guarantee and how that would work and what's that all about?
I'm going to let Jeff answer that.
We don't really have a guarantee.
Okay.
That'd be very difficult to do. We actually set up our pricing so that it's time and expenses and we give you an estimate of what it normally takes to do that. So if that was the situation, we can pick up potentially where we left off and continue going. Generally, we have been, probably the last half dozen or five selection processes, we've come out underneath that estimate, so we've had room to play. We haven't had to do that, we haven't had that situation. I've yet to have that where six months later, a person left.
Fantastic. So we'd be basically starting over then, is that kind of what I'm hearing there?
We would continue with the same agreement and just...
Can I just ask Jeff to speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, maybe move over by the mic.
Sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
We would continue with the process. I don't know that you start completely over. It kind of depends on how many applications we have. If we have discredited everybody and we only have one person and that person took it and then six months later, they decide to leave, we'd probably go back to those candidates that were in the running if there were good quality candidates.
Okay. So we need to basically review where we're at and look at projected expenses moving forward and kind of come to an understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm interested to know a little bit more about what sort of services you would offer for community involvement. And I know you had a range there, a price range for the contract. Would there be opportunities to have other ways of doing community involvement besides a survey such as a town hall or something like that? And then would you just add on a fee for that? How would that work?
Yes, yeah, if we met, you know, and that's another advantage to us doing time and expenses, is that we're flexible, you know? If we met with the selection group, we met with the council and talked about how you wanted to go forward with this and what steps. If you said, "Hey, we'd rather do a focus group-type meeting," we would set that up, we'd work that into the plan, you know, and we can tell you if there's hours that need to be adjusted or not, we'll give you a rough estimate where all that is. So we're very flexible when it comes to that. We have our set procedures and how we go through it, what we can work with you on adding things or changing things different ways.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead. When selecting a candidate, just to help out, I know I help out with salary and that, is it common to help out with relocation fees for an individual if they're out of state? Or what have you seen in past negotiations?
It depends on the council. But it's kind of all over the board. In a lot of cases, there is some relocation fees that are negotiated. Sometimes it's not needed. But I would say if the person's coming from out of state, there's often some sort of relocation fee involved.
Yes.
Sorry to turn my mic on. Just wondering about how, if you would help us with determining salary for the potential person that would come in and if that's an additional cost to our contract or if that's kind of included?
No, it's, well, two answers to that question. Yes, we would definitely give you some recommendations on salary. And as far as additional costs, the fact, the way we set it up with time and expenses and with the depth of our project team, if we're in the middle of doing this executive selection and you said, "Jeff, we really want your opinion on how we should handle this EMS situation," we would give you that, that's not extra cost. That's nothing we're going to throw at you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
You have some experience in Lake Mills, so what do you guys know about us? What do you know about the City of Lake Mills and what should we be looking for in our next city manager?
That's a loaded question. I'm surprised you'd ask me that. What I know about Lake Mills, as I mentioned, I know your Fire Chief very well, I know your Administrator very well, worked with both of them, I worked with your previous Fire Chief who's also one of your employees. I know, and I've literally, and Steve and I were talking about this, I've seen the change take place in Lake Mills and it's been huge. But I also know what government is faced with. We deal with it every day statewide in that there are a ton of challenges and you will have a ton of challenges coming up in the next several years. So, you know, everything from, you know, what you're going to do with EMS and how you're going to handle just a simple thing like that and how you're going to handle that staffing and deal with those type issues, I think are going to create a big challenge. They're creating a challenge nationwide right now. So it'll definitely create a challenge for you. Does that answer your question or is...
Yeah, except for the second part, you know, what are we looking for in this position going forward? And if you don't want to elaborate on that at this time, I totally understand that. But I am looking for some insight there. I mean, you guys have experience that we simply don't have at this point. And I think to us, at some capacity, this is a daunting task. This is an individual that has been in that seat for 20, 22 years, that has definitely left his mark on the city and in that position. So how do you follow that? What are kind of, what do you think the draw here would be for the next person? What are we looking for?
Okay. You know, some of that we're going to find out as we start the project and we get in more information from you. But I think the basics that we're looking for, I think you nowadays, for an administrative position, not dissimilar when we do a Police Chief or a Fire Chief hiring, you need somebody that is a very good leader, somebody that has very strong interpersonal skills, somebody that has had some exposure to the challenges and to the economy and what's going on in the state and Act 10 and everything related to that. That's kind of what we look for and I think we need somebody strong in all of those aspects right up front.
Very good, thank you.
All right, any other questions? I have a follow-up. I'm going to give you a chance to brag a little bit. You don't have to name the municipality, but I'm kind of looking for a strong relationship you have that you've built over the years and they continue to come back to you as a resource, hopefully in the city manager type of role. Can you talk about one of your clients that way?
One of my clients that way?
You can go with a couple, I guess. I'll let you go with it.
We have several. I think that's probably the most rewarding thing for me being, doing consulting for the last 25 years is that the amount of repeat clients we have. I would say that probably any given time, 50% of our workload is our repeat clients. We just had one today who's been, we've had a repeat client that we literally did a all-hazard emergency response plan for them. They had never had one approved by the state or by FEMA. We did their plan, it got approved. When the pandemic struck, five years later, they called us immediately, wanted us to help them. We not only helped them, it's actually a tribe, but we helped them with Incident Command and we've been doing that for the last two-plus years. We also helped their clinic with the same thing. We're now working with them to rewrite and update their all-hazard plan. That was a call that I got today, that they've been waiting on finance to get it approved. It's a grant, but they had to wait for their finance to do a budget. I would say in the last six years, we've had no less than, we've had at least six different projects for them and almost all of those projects lasted longer than five, six months, some of them several years. So, and I think that's pretty consistent. We have a lot of clients like that. And I don't have a problem using names. Lori is now, I worked with the Village of Holman and La Crosse and had some issues on the Fire Department. We got a shared service agreement and an MOU put together for them that makes the La Crosse Chief, Acting Chief for Holman Inn and La Crosse right now. Then they said, "Well, you know, he's a chief and he's got a Finance Director in La Crosse and he's got an HR person in La Crosse, but the district that you're covering now doesn't have an HR person and doesn't, you know, doesn't have a finance person." So we actually have an agreement, they asked us for another proposal to help them with that and we're doing management council with them on that. And in the middle of all that going on, they now ask us to come in and help them coordinate a long-term agreement with the city and with the Fire District. So there's like three major projects in the last two years with them.
Okay, great. It's nice to understand the scope of your abilities and other services that you offer besides maybe executive search, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's an important part for us. I know the other firms involved, I know all the people involved. We've actually, like Ed Henshaw, has been around for so long and he's been such a good guy and he was WCMA Executive Director, Wisconsin City County Managers Association Director for a long time. Some of the people that you have on these other projects or proposals actually were interns for him at one point, started that way. So they're all connected, we all work together, we've all done projects together. I think that's the positive thing for our team is that we don't just do executive selection projects. We deal in every aspect you can think of with municipalities. So I think we have a very broad spectrum of knowledge with municipalities.
Okay. Any follow-up question? Yes.
You mentioned one of the qualities you'd be looking for is a strong leader. How do you expect a city manager, that strong leader, to interact and work with a city council?
That's, I think that's the number-one group that he has to work with. A city manager has to work with Department Heads and deal with Department Heads on a daily basis. But if that city manager does not have interpersonal skills and the ability to understand councils and work with councils, then the budget doesn't get approved the way it needs to get approved, policies and procedures don't get approved the right way, and his Department Heads will be handicapped. So I think it's extremely important. And leadership skills is something that I think we probably spend 75% of our time dealing with those type issues. We're one of these consulting firms that have several municipal and municipal attorney and firms that when cities get in trouble and they, with their PD or their Fire Department or their chiefs, they say, "Give Jeff a call." And it's coming in to deal with the leadership issues and the egos and the problems that leaders have, Fire Chiefs have, administrators have, you know, Public Works Directors, all of that. So we kind of, we spend a lot of time dealing with that and I really feel that leadership skills and interpersonal skills are your most important thing. And it's even, the interpersonal skills, you know, you're interviewing tonight three different firms and I'm going to go out on a limb here, but after you interview those three firms, probably one of the most important things to look at is, how well would you get along working with that firm? You know, that's important. You know, if we're not, and I've often said this, if somebody is, if we're doing a study and we're doing a presentation proposal for, to do an organizational study and the City Council, I will tell the City Council right out, if you want a firm to come in here and tell you, have you, have you give me your watch and I'll tell you what time it is, we're not that firm. We're going to be very objective, very straightforward and base it on our backgrounds, our leadership skills and our knowledge of what best practices are and give you those recommendations.
Any other follow-up questions? All right, well, thank you for coming to Lake Mills. It's nice to meet both you and Jeff and Lori, both of you. And we're going to be making a decision next Tuesday night at our City Council meeting, so probably on Wednesday you'll get a phone call from somebody from our staff letting you know the results. And best of luck with that and we'll go from there. Do you have any questions for us at this point?
Any other questions? Thank you for having us. It was great to be back in Lake Mills. I'm not far away, I actually live in Oconomawak, so it's not too bad of a drive for me.
Beautiful area, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, it's 7:33-ish right now, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for recess to about 7:45 and hope that the next group will be ready to go. Does that make sense? Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? That's 5:00, so we stand in recess until 7:45. Thank you. So we'll call this back to session. It's about 7:47 it looks like and I have my microphone on, so that's great. So next on our agenda is Public Administration Associates. And I think we have Kevin with us tonight. Welcome to Lake Mills. And we'll go through your presentation, get into questions, but we have our name tags out, but Lisa's over there, Steve, Greg, Michelle and Catherine. Dan's our city attorney. And we'll go ahead and open the floor to you and let you jump right into it. Thanks Kevin, thanks for being here.
Thanks for the opportunity. Just have a quick PowerPoint. I know you got the proposal some time ago and, but I'll just kind of walk through a couple of highlights I think I wanted to point out. So next slide, I guess we're going to do this this way because I don't have a clicker. I want to just talk to you about our history and our values. Values are very important to us, I want to talk about that. I want to talk to you about our process for executive recruitment. I want to talk, I'm not going to talk about interim management, but we do that if you need that at some point. And then the pricing of our services. So we're about 20, almost 25 years old. It was founded by a guy named Dr. Steve Hints and a husband and wife, Team Bill and Denise Free. My partners and I are the second generation, if you will, and we're, there's two of us, there's three of us that currently run the company. We have about 17, 18 people that work for us around the state. We're really focused then on smaller communities. We work primarily, our sweet spot is between 3,000 and 30,000 population. We're all about professionalism in local government management and the ICMA Code of Ethics. I personally am a retired city manager. I was city manager in Whitewater, was also city manager in DePere and Manona, and I also served in Appleton and a couple of counties. But what we're really proud of is Dr. Hints is kind of the grandfather, father of city management in the state in that when I first came into the profession in the early 80s, there was only about 40 communities in the state. And I think Lake Mills was one of those that had professional city management or, you know... And I think Lake Mills was one of those that had professional city management or, or, you know, uh, you know, appointed administrators. And in about forty in nineteen eighty-five, and that's grown to over three hundred and twenty-five today. And it's large part due to our firm and, and Dr. Hints really promoting the profession. So when I talk about the profession, it's the city management profession. So next slide. We've conducted about three hundred and fifty, uh, CEO, CAO, um, recruitments in the last twenty, twenty years. We've had, uh, over a hundred and sixty-five, um, Wisconsin clients. We serve about fifty to sixty communities a year. In addition to executive recruitment, we do a lot of management studies. We do interim management. We do fire, um, fire police studies, things like that. Um, approximately sixty percent of our clients are repeats, which is pretty, pretty neat. I'm always gratified, again, we're the second generation of running this company, but it's, I'm always gratified when we get a call. For example, Oregon, Wisconsin, uh, hired us a year ago to hire their new administrator. And we had hired him twenty-one years ago and they called us back, you know, twenty-one years later to help them. So that was pretty cool that we were able to do that. And this is kind of unique. I, 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 I have utmost respect for, you know, the others that do this and the other firms that you've, you've interviewed tonight. But we have a, a guarantee. And, uh, briefly, the guarantee is, uh, we, we believe so much in our process um, that if the person does not work out for you in the first year, we will come back and do the whole recruitment process for, for free. Um, and we've only had to do that twice in twenty-three years. And, um, I think that's a ninety-nine percent plus success rate. So, um, the other thing, we're always continue, continually improving what we doing, what we're doing. We're all about continuous improvement and getting better. And, uh, for example, um, we've done during this COVID time, which has been crazy, right? Uh, we've, we, we, we've done a lot of different things. We've done virtual meet and greets for the communities. Uh, we did that, uh, in Sherwood Hills outside of Madison, uh, last year. We're doing something next week in Middleton. We're doing the Middleton Administrator, uh, next week. And we're doing, uh, something similar to that, kind of a virtual. Uh, so we're very adaptable and I, you know, we're really, I want to emphasize to, to the, to the council that we're very much interested in doing what's best for Lake Mills. And we'll contour this process so it's the best for you and for your citizenry. And, and, um, so that's a real key thing for us. Next slide. I'd like to step through our, our, our proposal. Briefly, and I'm going to do that right now. We have a, um, sounds like an AA meeting, but we have a twelve-step process that, that we've used. And, uh, it really starts with what we call discernment. We think it's very important that we start with the, with the city council and, um, and also with staff, in fact, to kind of decide, you know, what kind, or determine, I shouldn't say not decide, but determine what you're looking for in your next, uh, city manager. So we go through a process at the beginning. We use a couple of assessment tools to do that. And then what we, we do, I think you hire us for two reasons. You hire us to recruit. So we have a, we have a, um, a lot of different things we do to recruit. Let me just briefly go through those. It's in our proposal, but we will, we will certainly place a number of, um, we call text announcements, uh, on internet, uh, job sites, primarily ICMA, International City County Management Association, uh, WCMA, the state. Uh, Illinois, Illinois is very important for us. We try to mine some of the talent in Illinois. Minnesota. And then we also go to a lot of the, uh, uh, there's another group called Strategic Government Resources out of Texas. We get a lot of candidates through them. And then we also, um, uh, we go through, uh, is anybody familiar, anybody familiar with handshake? Handshake is a university, uh, jobs bulletin board. So we really try to focus in on the schools that are particularly good in, in public management, public administration. So we'll post those, but we also do a couple of other things. We, we like to do a, um, an electronic, um, or I, yeah, electronic, I guess I call it. Um, a real nice glossy, uh, piece, uh, to promote the position. We call it a position profile. And we work with you on, on getting photography and, and also, um, a video if you have it. And we put that together and we use that and we directly market to, uh, candidates. And we have a database of some, about a thousand, twelve hundred can, uh, potential candidates or, um, in the city management, uh, profession that we target that for, to, to. The other thing we do is, um, and I, I don't know if this would be your, your council president or if you, if you delegate to some, to someone else, but we like to do a video interview. I'm sorry, video, um, position announcement. And we post that on social media. And you might've seen that in our proposal. We think that's a really, particularly younger professionals. Uh, I know I've got a couple of young, younger sons and they, everything's video, right? I mean, you learn how to do everything on YouTube. So we, we try to post, um, the, the, a video announcement from the community. And we, 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 we film the council president and the mayor, the village president, whoever you want to be the spokesperson. And we actually post that on.
Attorney?
Or attorney? So, so we, we post that on social media, uh, primarily LinkedIn. LinkedIn is a really good resource, but Facebook, um, there's a lot of different, uh, we've been, we, we, we're really currently recruiting for the village, uh, or the city of Glendale outside of, of Milwaukee. And, uh, we're actually putting some stuff on TikTok. That's the first time we've done that. So it's a new, kind of new experiment for us there. But, um, so, so then we, so then we, you know, so that's the recruitment. So we're, we're going to do our darndest to bring the best and the brightest and the most talented candidates we can to you. Then after that, um, we will, uh, bring, bring those candidates to you. We, 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 we use a process where we kind of, kind of, uh, we don't, we don't rank them, but we put them in categories. These are the most qualified. These are, you know, these are, you know, they're not quite maybe where you're at, but they're up and coming or they've got some really good, uh, these candidates have some really good, um, uh, experience and, and talents. And so we, we try to, um, bring those to your attention. And then there's obviously you're going to get some candidates are not qualified at all. Then based on that, you select the ones you want to consider further. And it's typically eight to ten at that point. We call them semifinalists. And, um, at that point, we ask them to do a video, uh, interview. And this is something that we've been a staple of this company for twenty-some years. I remember myself being a candidate in DePere, Wisconsin. Got the job there and was recruited by Dr. Hints. And, um, I, my wife had a, I remember we had the old, uh, old cameras, camcorders, I think they're called, right? And she would have to hold it and she'd, and we'd have to send the, the big tapes in the mail to, to PAA. Well, everything's done, you know, it's a long time ago, right? And it's ancient history, but, but today what we do is we have the candidates produce those. And, uh, we, we think it's good to do that because it shows a couple of things. Number one, it shows what kind of level of interest they have in the community and, and in the position. And it also a little bit, you know, how tech savvy they are, you know, how sophisticated they might want to be in terms of presenting their credentials and their qualifications. And then, um, and, and then they produce those. And it's six minutes. It's, it's the, you know, the best elevator speech they can, can give. So we show you those. And then we also, at that point, we think it's very important, again, it's kind of our process. We do a really a deep dive on these candidates and we'll give you a, a five to six-page report on each one. Um, it's based on references that we've talked to and based upon our analysis of, of other people we know in the profession who've, that we can talk to about these people. Uh, we just did, we're doing Elkhorn, Wisconsin right now. Uh, we had a meeting with, uh, city council there last night and we presented those candidates. And, uh, uh, we presented those reports to them. So then after that, uh, you select, based on the, your review of the video, uh, interviews that they submit as well as our reference reports, you select the ones you want to bring to Lake Mills for, as we call finalists. And at that point, under state law, uh, state statute, that, any finalists that you name are subject to public disclosure. And, um, and those typically three to five candidates you'd bring here. And then we, we use an assessment, a center approach to selection. By that, I mean, we, we like to, to, to have them go through a series of exercises. Certainly the most important thing is interview with, with the, the city council. But we also like, and we very much encourage, uh, in fact, almost a hundred percent of the time, we also have a, we call a conversation with the department heads, with the staff. We think it's very important for them to be involved in the process. And we, um, facilitate that and we bring back a report to the city council um, on what the staff thinks about the candidates. We also like to do other things. We, we, and then we, and there's, and there's a list of those things. But some of the common things we do, a writing exercise, uh, using a scenario that you select. Uh, we can help you with that. Uh, we, we develop those. An emotional intelligence assessment, we think is really important. We think there's a strong correlation between emotional intelligence, particularly relationship management, for successful city managers. So we, 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 we typically incorporate that. Uh, tour of the community is very important. Many times communities want a community meet and greet, an opportunity for, um, community members to get a chance to meet these candidates, maybe ask a few questions. During the, during the last two years of COVID, that's become a little bit more dicey. You know, how can you do that without creating a super spreader event, you know? So, uh, but, but those are the type of things. It's, it's really, uh, it's typically either a, a, a full one-day affair or, or perhaps over two days. Next, next week in, in Middleton, for example, uh, we've got four candidates coming in. They're going to meet the, the city council, the mayor and the management team. You had a social gathering on Friday night and then the next day, they're going to get a tour. They're going to do a writing exercise, emotional intelligence. And then the two interview, the conversation with the staff and, and the interview. And then, um, again, our strong recommendation, I said that. So, next slide. We think it's really important to include emotionally-based questions and assessments. Uh, this was a, it's a study that's a few years old, but it's interesting. Forty-six percent of newly hired employees will fail in eighteen months. Uh, two reasons, lack of coachability and lack of emotional intelligence. Uh, in, interestingly enough, only eleven percent fail because they lack the necessary technical skills. I think you'd probably agree in whatever fields you, you know, you're, you're in. That, that, uh, it really comes, comes down to, to, you know, their ability to, you know, to adapt and to be coached and to be led, um, you know, especially in this case by the governing body. And then that, that emotional intelligence. So we think it's really important to include that as an integral component of the selection process. Next slide. It's all about relationships. Um, we think, um, we, we, I think we do a good job, uh, because we have very strong relationships in the city management field. Uh, like I said, we have about seventeen or eighteen of us around the state. We're well-connected. Uh, when we get in, we, if we get an assignment like, uh, Lake Mills, we'll convene a Zoom call with our associates and we say, oh, okay, here's Lake Mills. This is what they need. This is what, what we've discerned with them. And then we will, we will take in, uh, from all of our associates, you know, who also are connected beyond Wisconsin. And then we'll take in, you know, some targeted candidates we think would be really good for Lake Mills. Next slide. Iceberg, go below the surface. Um, this is, uh, the other part of that I talked earlier. Um, we think it's really important, uh, um, it's part of our responsibility to the community to really do a deep dive, go below the surface to really fi- find out about these people and to see what makes them tick. And I, I, I could give you one of our reports, but the mayor last night in Elkhorn said, he, he said this, you know, this is extraordinary. I, I know so much about these people already before they're even coming to us. And that's what they need. In order for them to make a cogent decision, they need to have as much information as possible because this is a very important decision that you're going to be making. So we try to go below the surface. Um, next, next one. Our pricing, uh, I like to think we're like a, like the Uber model or the Lyft model versus taxis or, you know, whatever. None of us get paid unless we, we work. So we're, we don't have any, we have very little overhead in this company. I don't, we don't have an office building. I operate out of the back of, or out of my basement and out of the back of my truck. Uh, everybody else does. And so, um, so that's why we keep our costs down. And I think we also have a responsibility, our founders kind of put together this company with the idea they want to give back and promote local government management profession. So most of us associated are, are retired from the profession. There were retired city managers. Some of us are fire chiefs, police chiefs, things like that. But we, we feel there's an obligation to give back a little bit. So that's a very important value to us. And then we also know, um, from our own experience, that you have tight budgets. You have fiduciary responsibility to local taxpayers and we respect and honor that. Next one. That's it. Um, the two people will be working on this would be, um, I'd be the person you'd see, okay? Uh, I live, you know, twenty-five miles away in Whitewater. Chris Schwartz, one of my partners, would also be, uh, working on this. So it would be the two of us. And we always work in tandem. We always, there's always two of us at every meet, well, and not at every meeting if we, if sometimes we have some conflicts. But certainly, um, through most of the process, you've got two people working. And the thing I'm going to point out about Chris and Schwartz, like, Chris and I, I should say, we've both been city managers and there is a difference between a city manager and a city administrator. We're very attuned to that. You know, that, there's only about twelve or thirteen communities in the state that have a city manager or a village manager form of government. And Chris and I have both served in that capacity. So we think we're kind of uniquely qualified because we've sat in that chair. And, uh, so that's it. I hope I didn't take too much time. I know you had a long evening here, but, um, more than happy to answer any questions.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, let's open it up for questions. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Kevin, for your presentation. Um, one of the things I found, um, interesting in your company's proposal is the emphasis on both recruit and select and the importance of our community, you know, promoting ourselves and what we are looking for and, you know, and what we need. Um, and the videos, uh, I thought that was a very unique approach. So what do you, what do you know already about Lake Mills? And what do you think we should be looking for in a city manager?
Well, I know you've got one of the best Mexican restaurants around because we come up to El Mirachi all the time. And I also know that I'm coming through here a lot on the trail, on the trail system. But no, I think, um, there's a couple of things that come to mind. You know, I live in the area, so I, I know Lake Mills pretty well. I think, uh, you know, I've only been in this build, this beautiful building a couple of times. But, um, but I think, you know, your location, that's something we'd really try to highlight. Your, your proximity to Madison, you know, between Milwaukee and, and, uh, in Madison. And I think that's very desirable to a lot of candidates. Um, a candidate we have in Elkhorn, I'm just using example, again, it's fresh in my mind because we had a meeting with the Elkhorn City Council last night. Candidate, he's a single guy, he's coming out of, uh, the Twin Cities. He really wants to be close to a metro, metro area because he, he wants to be able to socialize and things like that. So Elkhorn is desirable to him because he can go to, he can go to places. Well, Lake Mills is like that as well. So I think that, that's something that we have to point out. I think as the city manager form of government is very appealing to a lot of potential candidates, uh, particularly those from outside the state of Wisconsin. For example, I, I went to Michigan State University for my, my, hopefully hold that against me. I, I like, still like the Badgers, but, but, um, but in Michigan, everyone has a city manager form of government. There's five hundred communities that have city manager form of government. They don't have administrators like we have. We've had this kind of hybrid system here. But what I'm, I get, what I'm getting at is I think because of your form of government, that's going to be a, a, a real selling point. I just, you know, I, I live here, you know, the, it's just, you know, the, the, the amenities that we have here are just phenomenal. And that, those are the type of things we'd like to work with you on and try to emphasize in, in some of this, this personal kind of approach to selling the community, you know?
And so that's some of the things that we have to offer. So what should we be looking for, you know, to, to meet our needs?
You mean in terms of a, a, a candidate? Well, I think, you know, you know, I think Lake Mills is, is large enough that you can attract candidates who have already sat in the chair. We call it sat, sitting in the chair. There's the big chair, you know, it's the city manager because, you know, um, so we, we think, we think it's large enough that's, we can attract those kinds of people. I think, I think you also attract the, the amenities that you have here. You know, I think you have two high school, you have two wonderful high schools, I know. Um, my kids used to play at, you know, Lake Mills all the time in basketball. And, um, so I think those, you know, the school system, um, you know, your, your downtown square is, is gorgeous. It's a kind of quintessential, uh, quintessential Midwestern town. I think that's appealing to a lot of people. So I think in terms of, if we start marketing the position outsiders, I think those are, you know, those are kind of the things. And then I'd be, I, I, I don't think I know everything about your community to know what the opportunities are for a, a person coming in. That's something we'd have to explore and, and develop with you. But we always, in our position profiles, we always have, you know, this is the ideal candidate. This is what they're looking for. And these are the opportunities and challenges because it's very important. because it's very important, if we're going to try to get somebody interested in Lake Mills, there's got to be some, some good things that are going to, that they can sink their teeth in, in terms of, you know, professional and personal development, you know? So that's something I think we'd have to work on with you.
Thank you.
You had talked about the municipality size, that we're kind of in that sweet spot of the smaller municipalities that you work with. Can you talk a little bit more about how that, those experiences and how that expertise may help a community like Lake Mills in this effort?
Well, like I said, that's what we focus in on. You know, the larger communities, I'll be honest with you, they're not as fun to work with because they're a lot more bureaucratic, they're, let me, I think the best way I can answer that is I'm going to tell you a story about Eau Claire. So Eau Claire wanted to hire us, or we interviewed their, their city manager, their city manager form of government, and it's about, this is over two years ago, and they wanted to, they interviewed us, and it was a very rigorous, I mean, you know, process, just like you're going through. And we went through it. It was the first couple of months of COVID, so everybody's trying to figure out the technology and everything, and I, I think we were using WebEx at the time. I wasn't familiar with WebEx, and it was, it was kind of a mess. Well, anyway, we didn't get the, we didn't get the job, but you know what? They're still working on that recruitment today. They've gone through three different recruitment firms, and they still haven't hired a city manager yet. Part of it was, and it's hard to believe, right? It's hard, they've had an interim, they've, I think it's their, don't quote me, I think it's the planning director, finance director, somebody is running the city, certainly. But I guess the point I want to make is it's easier to work with smaller communities, there's less moving parts, and I just, I think people just, I just, we just love working with the smaller communities, you know, so.
So can you expand on your expertise as an organization and how that would, would help us in this, in this search?
Yeah, I think, you know, we have, you know, we have placed 350-some administrators, managers in communities very similar to Lake Mills. I don't think we've, I don't think Lake Mills, we've ever worked in Lake Mills before, so we'd be very honored and privileged to do that, add you to our growing and expanding list. But I just, I think we, because we're kind of known for working with those smaller communities, we just have that network, you know? For example, we did DeForest, DeForest Village, DeForest outside of, we did that in December. They hired a new person. I think there's probably four or five really good candidates we had in that pool that we could bring right here to Lake Mills. We know they're interested in this area. We know they're qualified. We know that they've got the skills and talents that you probably would need here. Again, I'm, I don't want to be presumptuous because I don't know all, we haven't done the discernment process yet.
Right.
But I think we can bring that kind of thing to the table, I think.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Hi, Kevin. So you spoke a lot about the emotional intelligence being an important part of your selection process and who the city manager might be, yet that, those aptitude tests are exclusively excluded from your quote today. So what do those cost?
Sure. Good question. Not much, to be honest with you. The, and the only reason I could have included, the one we use is called Smart Talent, and it's $25. So if you have four, so you have four finalists, $100. Not much, right? We'll administer that, and we'll interpret the results and present that to you. Now, if you want to do an aptitude test, or, you know, I'm sorry, a psychological eval for your final, let's say your final candidate, you'd really like that, that could run, for example, we did Little Shoot last fall, Little Village of Little Shoot up in Fox Valley, and they wanted to do a psycho, a psych, not a psycho, psychological evaluation. I think that ran $600. We facilitated that. We didn't, it was just a pass-through cost for us. So I would say if you just wanted to do the emotional intelligence, it's another $100. And the reason we don't quote that, because sometimes that goes up and down, depending on, the prices go up and down, I guess, is what I'm saying. But that would be really the only, now, the other thing that I think we excluded was, and this doesn't, excuse me, this doesn't happen very often, but if you want us to go and actually visit, let's say you're hiring somebody from Oklahoma, okay? I'm just making this up, and you want to, you know, you want to have, you want to talk to the people on the ground in Oklahoma about this particular candidate. Well, that would be, you know, cost something to, you know, travel to Oklahoma, do the interviews, things like that. We haven't done one of those in a number of years, but if you wanted to do that and wanted us to do that, then we'd have to quote you a separate price for that. We did, I think Mawston was the last one, they wanted to do that, but it was a candidate, I think, in the Milwaukee area, and they wound up doing it themselves. The mayor and a couple of council members went down and talked to the, to the people in the community that where this person was coming from. But a good point, I would say, you know, I can, with all assurances, I think you're about $100, $120, you know, for EQ. If we would use Smart Talent, there's some more, there's some, without getting into the EQ stuff, but I could talk about that for days, but there's a variety of different ones you could use. There's, there's, there's some that can go up to $400, $500. We wouldn't recommend those, but the one that we use is about $25 apiece.
All right. Any follow-up? Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I just don't want to be surprised with the big cost.
No, no, it's not, it's not a, yeah, I, I can't think of, we're doing one, we're actually doing one tomorrow, finishing one up, and it's $75. We have three candidates, so it's, that's, so it's our fee plus $75. That's it, you know, so.
I did have a follow-up question as well. You mentioned earlier difficulties in the COVID era, getting that community feedback about a candidate or about what they want. So how have you overcome those difficulties, and what are you doing currently?
Couple of things. We have done some surveys. We've done some surveys of, you know, community members. We did that in Oregon, Wisconsin about a year ago. We, we have had some, like I said, virtual community meet and greets. We did that successfully in Sherwood Hills, I know, last year. And some, in some cases, it's been limited. We did Fort Atkinson, the city manager. We did that recruitment and selection in December of 2020, and rather than like, sometimes we have meet and greets that'll be 70 or 80 people, they had a selected group. So it was, it was a smaller group. Everybody was social distancing, and they were wearing masks at the time, and that was a, that was at the height of, well, height of that particular phase of COVID, I guess, you know? So I think we'll work with you on that. We do think it's important, and some cities, villages disagree with us, but we do think it's important to have some community input into the process.
Any other questions? Great. All right. Well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to have you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We're going to make a decision on Tuesday night, so you'll get feedback on Wednesday next week.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Be careful. All right. So that's the wrap on the three firms that we're going to be interviewing tonight. If we can get a motion to, to break to a closed session?
I move to break to a closed session.
Second.
Ms. Quinn now, second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. It's 5:00, so we're breaking into closed session at 8:40. Thank you.